Good evening, everybody. It is September 23rd. It's the Town of Rhinebeck regular town board meeting. Would you please stand for the plate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize. I didn't notice Chauncey wasn't here, but he's right there.
He's quite far away.
Okay. Apologies. Let's just give Chauncey a moment here.
Hi.
Okey dokey. May I have a motion for the approval of our prior minutes from our September 9th, 2019 town board meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll save -- well, for announcements, I'd like to remind everybody that there is now early voting in New York State, and Rhinebeck is one of the six locations in the county where there is early voting. So please check the Duchess County Board of Elections website, but you can vote here on Saturday and Sunday, the 26th and the 27th, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., Monday, the 28th, from 9:00 to 5:00, Tuesday and Wednesday, October 29th and 30th, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., on Halloween, which is the 31st, on a Thursday, from 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., and on Saturday and Sunday, November 2nd and 3rd, from not -- well, on Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00, and on Sunday from 12:00 to 5:00, and then, of course, election days, Tuesday, the 5th. But we're thrilled that it's been extended, and we'll be having the board of elections here at 80 East Market Street. Are there any other announcements, or committee, or liaison reports?
I'll give you a couple of things. Our LED street lighting project for our roads has finally begun to move again. The matter has been held up, for reasons I wasn't clear about, by proceedings at the Public Service Commission, of which I have learned have not been completed, and have involved a recalculation or a recalculation method for the determination of what municipalities will pay for the equipment when we purchase it from Central Hudson, and it looks as though it may actually reduce our costs a little bit. New York Power Authority is now at the point where they are preparing a new total project analysis for us. You've seen three or four versions of that. You're going to see another one, at least one more, I would imagine, we'll get sometime within the next 10 days, or approximately 10 days. I also report that it looks as though we have cleared all the necessary hurdles to begin an evening pickleball program at the high school, in the high school gym, Thursdays from 8:00 to 10:00, probably starting on October 10th. I got the last necessary approval today, and it was necessary because of the change in the timing. There'll be some complications. We've got to work our way around basketball and volleyball games, but it's looking very, very good. I'm pretty sure it's going to happen.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okey dokey. We have a public hearing scheduled tonight for our 2020 contract with the Hillside Fire District and the 2020 contract with the Rhine Cliff Fire District. I am opening the public hearing. Does anybody here wish to say anything? The thing that I would like to say is that I received from Rhinebeck Fire Department a roster of all of their qualified members. It's, yeah, an active members roster with the qualifications for interior firefighters, EMT, exterior firefighters, and fire police, and I'd like to know if we received the same thing from Hillside and Rhine Cliff, and if not, could we?
Oh, yes.
So it's the roster of active members from Hillside and Rhine Cliff with the qualifications for interior firefighters, exterior firefighters, EMTs, and fire police. We got it from Rhinebeck, so I think it would be great to see it for the afternoon. Do we want to hold this open and vote on it at our next meeting? Let's hold it open.
Yeah, we could. There's no rush.
There's no rush, and maybe we can get this information.
Right. And just so you'll know, I did the financial analysis again, and basically, the purpose of what I did was to assure that we were paying for fire coverage at the same rate that the residents of the fire districts were paying, and in effect, we are. So the numbers we used last year were virtually the same as this year.
Great. I'd just like to see the roster, and we'll hold this open until the 28th, when we can vote on the contract. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Great. We have a brief presentation from Eric Ryback, who was our Town of Rhinebeck representative for PANDA. Eric was in Town Hall recently, and although Chauncey's the liaison, I was here, he brought me up to date. I thought we should all hear this. Thanks for coming, Eric.
Sure. Thank you. So just for anybody who doesn't know, PANDA, the acronym stands for Public Access Northern Duchess Area, and this is the public educational and government access station that serves Rhinebeck and Red Hook and the villages within. And it's also seen, so it's seen on Channel 23 for anybody who has cable in those towns and villages, and then also many of the programs can be seen on our YouTube channel and website. So December will mark three years that I've been on the board, and they did a terrible thing to me at my first meeting. They made me chair. My wife predicted what would happen.
See what happens when you volunteer.
I know. I know. So, you know, I've been an alternate for a few years prior to that, and there have been a number of controversies and issues with funding from one of the municipalities, and the good news is that over these past nearly three years, it's been pretty stable, and things are running pretty well, largely due to our station manager, Danielle Boloney. Danielle does a great job for us, and we're lucky to have her. You know, the only real pickups have been a couple of times that there were technical problems that Spectrum caused us, and we finally found a new contact there. They've been very hard to work with at times. So, and also, so what we do is, we have, of course, this meeting, the other town boards, village boards, and then some of the other boards. I think the planning board here takes their meetings. Just last year, the school board in Red Hook started taking their meetings and putting them on the channel, and it would be great if the Rhinebeck School Board wanted to do the same thing. In addition to that, we get programs from anybody who's a resident of these municipalities, and we get a good flow of things. Either things that people create themselves or give to us that they have the right to ask to replay it on the channel. So I wanted to say that, and really, the reason for my meeting with Elizabeth was to say, we've got some challenges. I wanted everybody to be aware of them, and I also see some really great opportunities for the channel. The first is that Danielle has told us that she's leaving us in two years. So the great news is we have two years' notice to think about what to do about that. She's going to school, and that's her schedule. Other challenges, our board is all made up of retired aged people, who none of us are retired, and so we don't have the time that we'd like to be devoting to doing more than the basic management and oversight of the channel. We aren't living within our budget, which wasn't the case before, but we are just barely within that budget. It's been four years since we asked for and received an increase. We're not asking for one at this time, but I wanted you to be aware of that. Any new equipment that we've had in the past few years came from a Forest Foundation grant that we got a couple of years ago, and we're applying for another one. They've been wonderful to us on two occasions left here. While our cameras and computers are up to date, the broadcast technology that runs the station is very out of date, and the cable company has shown no interest in pursuing new franchise agreements with municipalities. They really have no reason to. We're all operating under franchise agreements signed through cable companies ago, in 1992. The reason we wanted a new agreement is often what you negotiate is some money to fund new equipment. They're not going to do that now. They have no reason to. Our funding comes from the general fund, but I think this municipality and most of the others have viewed it as really coming from the franchise fees that you get from the cable company. So all that money goes into the general fund, but it's been kind of in everybody's mind that we get a percentage of that. And so one of the risks is that, as people sign off of cable, that revenue is going to go down, and there is no revenue to the town from non-television services like internet.
Or voiceover internet, or HBO.
We only get...
Well, no, you do get, I think, anything that is television. I believe you're getting what there is.
Premium channels, what I thought was we didn't get any of that.
I'm pretty sure...
So far, our revenue is holding pretty steady.
I think it's because they're increasing the fees.
Yes.
That's why we go so far.
Yeah.
Again, I'm pretty certain that we do get it from anything that's television, including premium and including a piece of home shopping.
We do not get anything from telephone or voice.
Telephone, internet, security.
Nothing like that. You're correct. It is only that.
And I did look at one of the statements a couple of years ago, and pretty -- I can't say 100%, but I'm pretty sure I looked at that. That's certainly what you're supposed to be getting, 5% of all of our revenue. And of course, they've been charged it to, if you get cable, you'll see a line where they got it back from you as a supplier. It's a pass through. Cable companies do not view stations like ours as an asset. I don't understand that. I spoke into people who say, "I've kept my cable because of PANDA," but they don't view it that way, and they even are doing things to really hurt public access stations. This could happen to us. It hasn't, but a lot of communities, one day, they just change what channel you're on, and there's nothing that says that they can't. And when I say change your channel, not from 23 to 24, but from 23 to 972, and that could happen anytime, and I know people that it's happened to. So those are some of the challenges we have, but I also see a great opportunity for us, whether under the current construct or another one, but for local, public-oriented television. There's almost no local media in Rhinebeck or our general area of Northern Duchess, and we're television. We're TV. We're video, which is, you know, very hot right now, and it's a great way to communicate. So access TV could be much more vibrant than what we have now. Updated technology would allow us to broadcast meetings and other events live. As people move away from cable to streaming TV, we could have our own channels on the Roku device, the Apple device, other devices. Viewing local shows would be done on demand, just like looking at Netflix, on any device. You could also have a responsive website. You could look at anything on your phone, on your iPad, on your computers. But this would take an investment of dollars, obviously, and also, we need more energy, and that's where I've been a little slimy, is how to find people to create some kind of groundswell, people who want to make TV, honestly, because the opportunity is there today for more, but certainly in the future, I think it can be even more important. And, you know, one of the things that Elizabeth suggested also is, do we need to stay married to the cable company? One of the challenges I forgot to mention is, we need to move. Our studio's in Tibbly. Our landlord wants to redevelop. He's been very patient with us. He wants us to move, to move the uplink, the fiber connection uplink that sends our signal up to Spectrum. They want to charge us $7,000, and they've not been very interested in not charging us that. We don't have that. So as fewer people are watching on cable and more people are watching TV other ways, maybe it won't matter in the long run if we have a cable channel, and that could give us the opportunity to either Rhinebeck could go it alone, Rhinebeck could stick with Red Hook, we could then work in concert with other counties in the area that are on, right now, different cable systems, and by the way, don't have any public access. Wyland doesn't have anything. Clinton doesn't have anything. So there are a lot of opportunities to reconfigure what it is we do, to get a burst of some new energy and have some great TV, local news, local public affairs, more advanced, some of them live. That's all there possible, but we need money and we need more energy from people who are interested in it. I'm very open to thoughts about that, and anybody who's watching who's interested and hasn't been involved, to contact us.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate you coming. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
So just, you're on YouTube and there's a cable channel right now. That's the basic one.
Right. And YouTube has...
Wait. YouTube is just some show. Shows. There's, PANDA is on cable TV.
Correct. The two sources to get to things.
And our website.
Our website. People also post it on websites.
So the live station is only available on Channel 23, the programs running all the time.
We post our town meetings on our town website.
But we do have a YouTube channel, and most of the programs are available there on demand. And then on our website, which even though it's not a current responsive website, I've watched programs on my phone from our website, too.
I just want to recap, but thanks, Eric. We're going to lose our station manager in two years. She's going to medical school. She's the glue that holds us together. Our landlord wants us to move, and technology is changing, so we really have to reinvent ourselves, but like Eric said, it could be exciting, because this cable is on its way out, but we do need to still provide, I think, the public with what we're doing. It's a great service. So there are some opportunities here, and I think we should, we should try and, please, if anyone's interested in helping us, contact us. We have ideas. So thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Ellen. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make, you know what, before we go into this, I forgot one announcement. Our town historian Nancy, who needs, sorry? Oh, Nancy Kelly, did I not say her last name? Is, spends so much time doing what she does to the town. She does such an amazing dedicate, she's an amazing, dedicated, really knowledgeable historian. She needs an assistant or a deputy. If anybody is interested, please contact me. I appoint the town historian. We'd like to get someone to help Nancy, and I'm thinking we'll fund a stipend for a deputy historian this year. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2019 to 15 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2019 to 16 for abstract cables, 42 checks totaling May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019 to 17 for our capital projects abstracts. There are two checks totaling $17,273. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions or comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019 to 18. The state is allowing us to waiver the town's portion of marriage licenses, marriage license fees for active-duty members of the military, so we're happy to be able to do that. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I would like a motion for Resolution 2019 to 19 for the extension of our intermunicipal agreement with Duchess County for snow removal and ice control services. Alan?
Oh, I'm from here. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Your highway. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Alan, thank you for getting this done and working with Brennan, our county legislator. The town is now going to be plowing and taking care of River Road again, which, thanks to both of you, is a great restoration of services for our residents. The county did it. It was the end of their very long plow road. Now, our town highway department will take care of it. It will be done sooner and more frequently, so thank you very much for working on that. I appreciate it. Have we voted on this? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Resolution 2019 to 20, a request to New York State Department of Transportation to lower the maximum speed limit on River Road, County Route 103, in the town of Rhinebeck, north of State 199. It's only a couple of hundred feet. I will make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. This is for the governor's plan, whether it's well-conceived or not, the entire state trail, we're going to lower the speed limit on our couple of hundred feet limit on River Road, because the state has asked us to. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I need a motion for Resolution 2019 to 21 to shift certain maintenance departments' funds from the replacement of electrical lighting at the dock to purchase of materials for repair of the seawall, and the price is in here this time, so it's great. May I have a motion?
I'll make that one.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I need a motion for Resolution 2019 to 22 for the health insurance premium buyout for our building department typist.
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Alan. Is, are there any questions? Our policy, our town employment policy allows for us to buy out individuals, full-time people who are entitled to health insurance benefits if they get their insurance through a spouse or partner's plan. That's what this is, and our employee is a lot more than a typist. She runs the department with grace and good humor and great efficiency. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. We have our county legislator, Brendan Carney, here to give us an update. Sorry, Brennan, can you hold one second? We have new business.
Yes.
And I'd like to set the budget schedule, but we can do that after, Brennan. That's okay.
Sure.
Resolution 2019 to 23. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Go ahead, Alan.
It's pretty simple. Highway Department has three standards that are no longer functional, and they want to get rid of them and scrap. They've already been replaced.
Great.
So this resolution authorizes the highway department to scrap those and sell them.
Great. Any further discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Again, Brendan Carney, our county legislator, here to bring us up to date on what's going on in Poughkeepsie.
All right. Let's go. I'm going to break you. Okay. Everybody hear me? Yes. First of all, I want to say what positive feedback I have gotten on PANDA in recent weeks, as I am speaking with tons of people this time of year, and how many residents tell me that they catch every single meeting. So that's been, I knew there were many, but I don't think it really came home to me. They're really listening, which is wonderful, and they really appreciate it. Also, I'm going to take your waiver of the town's marriage license fee and include it for members of the military. I put together a binder of largely county services for veterans and their families. I was at a conference. Elizabeth was at the conference with me down in Poughkeepsie, so I think I'll put a little piece in there so they know that's another service available to our community.
Well, anyone can come here and get a pair of...
Oh, any, oh, I know. But I just, I just will have that as a service.
Thank you. I think we're the first town to pass it.
I'm really glad we're doing that. And then today, I would actually like to read a little bit more than I usually do. Don't worry. Not too long, but some of my colleagues, my Democratic colleagues, and I have been working on a couple of resolutions that I think are very important, and I'd like to actually know the real specifics. So in 2009, Duchess County registered onto the state's Climate Smart Program, and not much has happened since that time, not a lot. And so we are proposing legislation that would set some specific targets, and this is why I want to read this to you. A 30% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions associated with county operations by 2030, and an 80% reduction in such emissions by 2050. We also would like to direct the county, beginning next year, to purchase 100% of its electricity from local renewable resources or by obtaining green E-energy certified renewable energy certificates. And there are more details on this plan. I will post these resolutions on my Facebook page, so people can see them specifically, but I think this is really important. I hope we'll find, we'll all find some support from each other and get something like this passed so that the county can move forward, and I know that it's just Rhinebeck, since Rhinebeck as a community, town and village, are doing so much in that direction. And then the only other thing, I'm sorry...
Would it help if we wrote a letter of support to the legislator?
I think that would be wonderful. Yes, thank you. Would be wonderful. And then the other important piece of legislation that we are working on relates to the opioid crisis. I don't know if you all have been hearing, but Duchess County continues to be the second hardest county in New York State.
Really?
Which is just, I'm going to start turning my attention to that to try to understand more about why we're experiencing this, but we are definitely not protected from this crisis and in fact are being quite hard hit by it, so I think it's...
We're the second county in the state?
And our numbers are rising while some other counties' numbers are starting to go down as attention has been focused on it.
Do we know why?
That's what I'm saying. I want to work more and find out. I'm confused by that, and I'm appalled when it came to my attention. So the Duchess County enrolled in a lawsuit against 12 manufacturers of opioid prescription drugs in 2017, and this resolution would require that 100% of any award received from that lawsuit after costs be dedicated to expanding the availability of a couple of things in Duchess County. Effective evidence-based treatments for chemical dependency, mental health service and supports, initiatives that directly support these goals, such as supportive housing, diversion training for law enforcement officers, and scholarships for Duchess County residents. And, excuse me, and those scholarships would be to obtain education and certification in mental health and addiction recovery fields. So just a push to take, if there is a recovery of money, to take it and directly address this. And hold on, I know I'm going longer than I usually do, but there's one other thing. Along those same lines, we, I, we are hoping to expand the way the county deals with people coming in, experiencing opioid addiction, and that would, probably the real meat of that would be medication-assisted treatment available to clients throughout their residential rehabilitation, which is really shown to be really crucial in helping people battle that. So there, and there are many other things, and I could go on and on, which I won't. And again, I will put all of this information on my Facebook page, which is @Carney4, number 4, Clinton, Rhinebeck. But I think these are really exciting things that my colleagues and I are working on. I think they're really critical, and I wanted to share them.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are the clean air efforts that you were talking about, is there anybody talking about shutting down the incinerator?
No, nobody.
Well, there's always talk about shutting down the incinerator and/or change some of the functions of the incinerator. Yes, and I continue to speak with colleagues about that. It's something that I certainly would support. We have a D rating in Duchess County for air quality, which is, you know, we have a worse rating than Cat... a worse rating than counties closer to New York City, so you would...
We have one of the seven worst sites in the country. The county resource transfer system, whatever, we want to, I can't remember, the incinerator is one of the biggest polluters in the country. So, if you guys are in agreement and want to write a letter from all of us in support of the, you know, Climate Smart County, I'll put it together and send it out.
Superb. Well, you know what, I can do, I'll send, why don't I email all of you all the specific language?
Thank you. We'll work on a draft together, and the board will send it out and support.
That's awesome. But yes, Alan, that's, I'm on the environmental committee, and that's one of our major concerns. And I'd love to get some traction for...
We'll help you. It's important to us.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks for your work.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your help with the roads, too. Okay, quickly, and then we can adjourn. We're almost, we almost have the draft of the budget, of my tentative budget, so I'd like to set some meetings. I thought I might have it ready today, but no such luck. We're still waiting for some figures from a couple of different departments. Alan, I'd like one more meeting with you and Elaine. I think we have to go over some rec numbers. I'm waiting for final insurance numbers, which I probably won't have, so we'll estimate high, but I need one more meeting with rec.
There's a rec committee meeting tomorrow night, which will, I'll get the numbers there.
Well, we have the numbers, but we, Shelley and I have some concerns, so I'd like to go over it with you, Elaine, so we can make a meeting. To do that, maybe Wednesday, if you have time. But I have to give the budget to, my tentative budget, to the clerk by Monday, the thirtieth, so I was hoping we could meet then, and I could give it to you as well. So, I'd like to schedule a meeting for Monday, the thirtieth, to present you with my tentative budget. What time works for all of you?
I'm free all day.
That's great, Chauncey. Josh, how about you?
Monday, the thirtieth is fine.
Okay. Alan?
Pretty much any time.
Can we do a four PM? Is that okay?
Yep.
Four PM, great.
Four PM on...
Monday, September thirtieth, for me to present...
Excuse me, I was looking at October. Give me a second.
Thank you.
Okay. What time did you say?
I said four PM, but we can do it earlier. You want to do three?
I'm free all day.
Let's do three PM.
Okay. September thirtieth, three.
Sorry?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Oh, four, Ed needs a little later, four PM. Sorry, guys.
Four o'clock. Ed's always choice.
Ed is anything but choice. How dare you? And then I figured the dates that seem to work with everybody are Wednesdays and Fridays, so can we schedule some budget workshops? Does that still work for you, Josh?
Yeah, it works perfectly.
Okay, so can we schedule some budget workshops, and we can cancel as needed? It's better that we schedule them in a public meeting rather than me sending out notices and the clerk doing it? So, how about Friday, the fourth?
I'm out of town.
Well, can we do it without you?
Absolutely.
Okay. How about Wednesday, the second? You're out of town Wednesday, the second?
I'm out of town from the second to the fourth of September.
Okay. How about Friday, the ninth, and Wednesday, the ninth, and Friday, the eleventh? Okay.
Friday, the ninth is the Jewish holiday.
Can you not?
Yeah, I can come, but, you know...
All right. Let's schedule Friday, ten-four, at one PM. Let's schedule Wednesday, ten-nine, and Friday, ten-eleven, at one PM. How about Wednesday and Friday, the sixteenth and eighteenth, at one PM?
Excuse me, you're going a little too fast. Friday, the, Friday, the fourth, at one, although I won't be able to either. And the ninth, at...
The ninth and eleventh, at one.
And the eleventh, at one.
The sixteenth and eighteenth, at one.
Sixteen, eighteen. Well, these were your tentative...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then the thirtieth and the first, at one. I don't think we'll need all these meetings, but they're publicly noticed, and we can cancel as needed. But maybe you'll want to totally redo the budget, and that's fine.
Most of them.
Hoping that we can do the public hearing, you know, as soon as we have a preliminary budget that everyone's happy with, we can cancel these meetings, schedule a public hearing in the evening, and adopt it. We have to adopt this no later than the seventh of November. All right?